Next, I'd like to ask Joe to come up, and he's got a couple of issues I'd like him to comment on. Pokemon Go phenomena, what he's learned about it, and what are some of the issues going on with it. And yes, one of the issues that we'll talk about is can we opt out of it? And then after he talks about that, answers any of your questions, I'll just give you a quick status report on pay parking. Joe?
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. We've been talking about this at the staff level, in staff meetings for the last, I think it's been about a month since this really exploded. Obviously, we've all seen about it, some of the news reports about this in other areas, other cities around our area. What we've experienced is large crowds in the Marina and the beach park. We haven't really seen an increase in graffiti, vandalism, or property damage. Trash, especially in the beach park, was a problem at first, but working with our, the ecology, we've kind of got a handle on that, but it's still an issue out in the parking lots, and we've seen, especially in the south end, well, south end, north end. But we are having problems that are common to large crowds. We've got the open use of alcohol, we see that, we see some people smoking pot, obviously noise, which is bothersome to our neighbors, and then obviously, there's always somebody with, pushing the boundaries with some inappropriate behavior. One of the problems we're also experiencing is that we do have our 10 o'clock, our 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM vehicle traffic curfew, and our officers have been pretty good about sweeping the lots and getting those people to leave, but they've been going to the Anthony's lots, and so kind of sort of setting up there, they park in Anthony's and then keep playing the game throughout the night. So, we've basically, kind of relocated the problem to the south end. We were able to, this is a nationwide problem, we were able to take part in a webinar yesterday morning with the National Recreation and Parks Association, and it talked about the, how the game works, and how other, how other cities and organizations are dealing with it around the country. The, the scale of it is amazingly large. Pokemon Go is, and just to give you some context, it's, this game is the first of what is broadly classed as augmented reality on mobile applications. And the prog, the projections for this, the growth of this particular type of game is staggering, really, so. And when you think about the, when you actually look at the game, it's really a pretty basic GPS-based game. But, one of the commenters on the webinar basically said, if you all remember Pac-Man, well, Pokemon Go is Pac-Man compared to what we will be in a very short time, you know? So, it's really a, it's, this is, the message is, this is the beginning, not, certainly not the end, so. Just briefly, how it works, I don't know, does anybody play, anybody play the game? You know, so, alright, good for you, yeah, good for you. Well, the reason why we're so impacted is, these dots are what they call Poki stops. And we have 28 of them in the downtown, you can see they're in the downtown, and beach park, and in the Marina.
This is Joe's house.
Yeah. These, and this is, these are locations, GPS locations, where you go to with your smartphone, and you've downloaded the application on your smartphone. You go to these locations, and you can download, and I may get this wrong, because I'm very new to this, but this is where you go to get the, the information and the things you need to play the game. The game is actually played, like a lot of the games that I've watched my grandkids play, it's usually some imaginary creature beating up another imaginary creature, and that is accomplished at what they call Poki gyms, gym as in gymnasium. And there's one at the south Marina Park, there's one at the end of the beach, at the end of our fishing pier, and then there's one up near the, near the bridge on the, on the Des Moines Creek Trail.
How tall is this?
Yeah. Alright. So, that's what, that's what you see, you see large crowds of young people.
Yep.
Young people, well, people that are younger than me, wandering around, staring at their, their phones, and their, 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 what they're really looking for is, they want to capture the Pokemon creatures that pop up randomly around this area, and they don't, so that's, when you see on the news, a large crowd of people taking off and running over to this, knocking down the fence and running through the park, that's because somebody screamed that one of the really rare Pokemons just popped up at some other place, so. The, there's, there's many layers to the game, I won't go into that now, but, the, what we really learned from this, at least this level, is that this is how other, other cities and other agencies are communicating with the people playing the game. So, you know where they have to go, so if you have some signage, that's where you want your signage. Now, the other thing is, they've all got the smartphone in their hand, so if you have a message you want to get to them, you need to have a Facebook page, or someplace they can access that information as fast as, you know, instantly, so. So, the, like I said, this is the end, not the beginning. We're a large public facility, and lots and lots of people are using the public facility to play this game, so, I don't, we, the, the choice for the city is, do we opt out of this game? Because you can do that, as Tony mentioned, we can go, go to their website, and we can actually opt out as a city, we can opt out of this game. Private property owners, obviously, would have to go and opt out on their own. Or, do we want to try to manage this somehow, and see if there's, if there's some way-
And one other question I ask, follow-up on Joe, is can we opt out just for certain times of the day?
We are, we sent an email today to, to the, to the website, to see if that is a possibility. I'm, I'm not hopeful, because when you look at the scale of that, this is an international thing, so, so I think you're either in or out, but we will take a look at that and see if it's, can be time-zoned.
So, Joe, do these Poki stops change? Do they stay stat? I mean-
They do change, although, one of the recommendations from the webinar was to review your map, and we, basically, what we did was, we hired, we hired one of the junior staffers at Camp Chaos to go around and make our map for us.
One of the young ones?
Yeah. Yeah, they had it done in about 45 minutes, you know, so.
So, you can actually go in and-
Well, yeah, the idea is, is, for once, like, the Poki gym near the bridge, we've had a lot of problems with, on the Des Moines Creek Trail, anyway, so I think one of our recommendations would be to go on the website and say, hey, we don't want that Poki gym there, we want it someplace else, especially, we, you know, just to put the traffic on the trail is a little problematic, I would think, so. But the other opportunity is, we've got, did you have this, you have the sign? Oh, yeah, it's, it's on the site, but, but we could show, in your packet, there's a sign there, that we have an opportunity for signage, so we can actually get out our A boards and go around to the, to sort of the strategic spots, and we can put out some signage that encourages people to quit playing at 10 o'clock, because I think that's 90% of the problem, is we just get people there way too late at night, and they start to bother the neighbors. The other thing that we would recommend, if, and I did talk to Anthony's today, is essentially coming up with a way to barricade their parking lots off at night, you notice how they do that for fireworks and, and farmer's market days, we essentially do the same thing, but just do it every night for a while, and, so when we sweep the lots, we actually move the, move the cars on, they don't just go to Anthony's.
But one more, Joe. I see staff recommendations, is there any way for us to make some of this $120 billion?
Yeah, I, I, the, it's a, and I, I guess if you want to look at it in a positive way, it's an activity-based game, so there's certain elements of the game that actually, you actually have to walk to accomplish, so they've, some, some recreation parks and parks departments around the country are already starting to have Pokemon events, like you have a Pokemon 5K, you have a Pokemon 10K, because they actually play the game while they're doing this event, and, and then they, they advertise a Pokemon, for instance, let's say you're, it's a Halloween, it's, so it's a Pokemon, you open up your parks until midnight, and just do the Pokemon, you know, have a Pokemon Halloween party, or something like that. So, so I, it's, it was, I guess, looking at the good side of it, or the best intentions, is that it was, it was developed as an activity-based game, and for the gaming community to use, and, and I suppose, they've succeeded in getting kids off the couch and down to the Marina, so.
So, I take it that Pokemon Inc. is a business, and they're making money on this game, right?
It's not Nintendo, it's Nanantic, that was developed by Nanantic and Google. Nintendo's only a third person in this, and they're only a stakeholder because they own Pokemon, they're not making any money off of this whatsoever, they're a shareholder, so they don't make any money. It's Nanantic and Google that have developed this game.
Interesting.
So.
So, I just didn't know what the stakeholders, they're just doing this for the fun of it?
I sort of doubt that, I think when you start talking about 100 million downloads, and then there's a, there's a-
Yeah, is there advertising rights? The point I'm getting at is, if there's money being made, is this something that they should be having a business license, and other cities tried to do that?
Boy, I don't know, that's- Just like any other game, if you run out of lives, you have to pay five bucks for more lives, or more time, or anything like that. And, so, instead of waiting to recoup, or regenerate, or whatever, people are paying $5 every few minutes, and with millions and millions and millions of people playing this game, it spans three generations, right? You've got the four-year-olds that are playing it, you've got the 20-year-olds that are playing it, and you've got the 45-year-olds that are playing it, three generations of people are playing this game. And that's why the beach park is so packed right now, and Anthony's is empty, the market is doing bad because of it, it, it is not helping at all, except for congestion in the beach park, and taxing our police force, that's already taxed, taxing our Marina staff that is already taxed to the gill, empty and trash, and, and getting people out of there, so I-
The only other thing I was going to add is, it's also monetized from the standpoint that there are businesses that want people coming in, and, and have paid the company for the right to post, to have a-
They become a Poki stop.
Mm-hmm. So, even if, even if there was a way, you know, I think one of the challenges from a standpoint of trying to-
Make a buck for it, yeah.
Yeah, the, the challenge with that is, it's probably falls under the same as-
Freedom of speech?
No, internet connectivity and that kind of thing, where we have no, we have no regulatory authority over it, either because of state preemption or federal preemption, so, you know, but, I, I agree with, I agree with what Councilmember Netting has said, though, I'm concerned about what the impacts are as well, in terms of resources.
It could be borderline considered a public business.
Excuse me, Councilmember Bangs is next.
I just wanted to give some credit to Melissa, can we, can we just put in quick charging stations for five bucks a charge?
That was one of the fundraising things, they would, some of the departments that, or some of the locations would, would set up, they would sell water, they'd bring in food trucks, and they would sell the charging sticks, so, yeah, it's, like I said, this is not the end, this is just the beginning, and it's, it's going to be around for a long time.
Councilmember Netting?
I was hoping that it would just fade away, but it didn't do that.
And, I'm sorry, I'm a little, the, the whole thing's frustrating to me, and I'll share a story really quick, and, and I've shared it with a couple of people. On a Saturday afternoon, the wife and I went to dinner, and then went to dessert at Anthony's, and the parking lot was absolutely packed, the Marina was packed, almost nowhere to park, find a place to park. We walked into Anthony's on a Saturday afternoon, it was gorgeous, mild, should have been waiting 45 minutes for a seat, walked upstairs, sat down, there was only two other couples on the patio, on a beautiful afternoon, watching the sunset. So, I've got to believe that Anthony's is suffering from this as well. And, when we sit up here and talk about how the economic development of this town, and how we support, support our businesses, I am more in support of our businesses that have been here and supported us for a long time, then, I would like to go down the road and try to figure out how to make this work, but, if you would like, I have done some research myself, I have the website right here, to remove the beach park, or whatever it is that we choose to remove from the Poki stops, and, I mean, I'm, the market has seen a decrease in revenues, there are people saying that are not going to the Wednesday night market, or to support anything on the Wednesday night, or the Saturday afternoon market, and, and those guys have created a place and, and a market that went from barely getting 10 people in a small alcove, to the grandeur that it is today, and a destination, and as far as I'm concerned, we can't be a destination for Pokemon, we have to be a destination for what it is that we've set our roots in. So, that, that is my stance on it, and I'm glad that I have this opportunity publicly to say that.
Councilmember Wester?
Did you find out in your webinar, your, yeah, your webinar, how the stops got there? I mean, I know that-
It's a-
It's so saturated down there, and I know the city of Bellevue is fighting this, if you Google search Bellevue Pokemon Go, and it's like, it looks like the mall at Washington DC, it's just packed with these kids, and their infrastructure, you know, the irrigation's getting ruined, the fountains aren't working, the, just not because anyone's damaging anything, but there's just sheer numbers of people.
You know, I don't know the exact answer to that, I can surmise that it's a, it's a GPS-based application, so I would imagine that the, what the, what the, what the program is looking for, when they set this up, they're looking for large, open spaces, and they assign these spots to GPS locations on that map.
Because it's so specific, like, the, I mean, you look at the, one of the stops, for example, is the artwork on the outside of City Hall, and it's, shows the picture of the art and the description of it, and if you go through the tour of our sculpture on the Art Commission, all the sculptures are Poki stops. So, it made me wonder if there was like some crowdsourcing thing, or if they're just going through people's, because it's so specific.
It's, and basically probably Google Earth, where they just zoom in on it, and they tag them, you know, but, yes, it would just, I mean, this is international, so, how, and I can't imagine that there are people doing that, but maybe that's the way it's set up, I'm not sure.
And churches are, if you walk down 8th Avenue, there's a stop at every single church, as you're heading north, cemeteries, water towers, I mean, so they've taken large structures and just put stops there without anybody's permission.
Maybe they have a program that just can, uses Google Earth, and they recognize big, open spaces, and they just start dropping spots in there, I'm, I'm not sure.
So, I have a question about the site that you mentioned, Councilmember Netting, excuse me. Okay, does it have to be the entire city? Does it have to be, you know, how much control do you have over what you take off?
From what I've seen, from what I've seen, you have some control, you can't just delete your entire city, but you can delete certain places that have become a nuisance, in essence, that has caused a hardship, and you have to be able to prove that kind of thing, that it's, it's taxing your police force, it's already having problems, it's, the Marina staff is putting way too much time into it than they need to be, the citizens are writing letters, and it's not just one citizen or two citizens, it's hundreds of citizens getting behind it, saying that this, this whole congregation of, and, and businesses behind it as well, so you, you need to show some proof, but-
What I'd like to understand is, I'm concerned about the whack-a-mole principle. So, we take the Marina off in Des Moines, you know, downtown here, and all of a sudden, Redondo gets plagued with the density that is no longer in the Des Moines Marina. I, I, we need to understand what the ramifications are, and, and I, I'm not trying to delay what the, anything, I'm just saying that, how, how, where can we go to understand this? It doesn't look like there's anybody you can talk to, it looks like you just get to watch webinars.
I think the big problem is, is that the Marina is such a big area.
Yeah.
I mean, when you're walking down, and there's three churches, you know, boom, 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 nobody's going to park their car, hundreds of people aren't going to park their car to hit three churches on 8th Avenue. You know, they're, they're not going to park their car for one stop, or anything like that, they're going to probably wreck into somebody playing it while they're driving. But, the fact of the matter is, is the Marina is so big, with so much of this right here, and that by the time you get from Anthony's to the beach park, everything's regenerated, so you can walk back and do it all again, and keep collecting stuff on the way. So, it takes, from what I understand, it takes 30 to 45 minutes for the first stop that you do, to regenerate itself, so you can go back and hit it again. And so that's why they're down there all day, they park, they go from one end, they chase everything, they get up to the beach park, they do that, and they go back and do it all again.
Where do they get?
I, I'm sorry, I've never been a big video game player, so I have no idea.
Critters.
So, I guess, what we need, Councilmember Back, did you want to say something?
I want to ask Tim, is there any legal fight, where we call this a public nuisance, because of the drain it's putting on our staff and resource?
I think we'd need some more specific information, but, from what I've heard, probably not a public nuisance. It just seems like it's, it's a busy time at the Marina, and it's being overused, potentially, but I don't think it would be considered a nuisance under the law.
Well, I think the lawsuit's going to come when a mother watching her phone, and not her two-year-old that's swimming in the incoming surf, gets carried out and dies in our beach park, or our waterfront. And I've, I've witnessed it, and I'm sure everybody in this room that's been down there has witnessed this as well. So, that's where the lawsuits are going to come from.
My, my thinking is, it sounds like we, as a team, need to come up with, it almost sounds like a full opt-in or full opt-out, because, again, I, I don't know how the balloon will stretch, if you take one thing out, I, I am very concerned that it would just move the density to someplace else, with, and it could be within the city, we're long and narrow, we, we have, we don't have a lot of spaces like the Marina, but, you know, you have Landmark on the sound, you have the Redondo beachfront, you have a number, you've got Saltwater Park, you know, so I'm saying, I, I think we need to think about that, but, you know, where does the Council want to, I, I personally think we ought to yield to staff recommendation, and say, you know, I, I agree with all the points that have been made here, and if, you know, if you guys think we ought to, we ought to opt out, then that's what we ought to do, but that's my opinion.
Well-
I see, I, I did put a post on a community page a couple of weeks ago, and it was an overwhelming number of people saying, it's hurting our park, I mean, I think of everyone who posted, or maybe three people who said, just, you know, let them live, they're just kids, be, having fun, but I would say dozens of people said, it's time to, they wouldn't, their feelings wouldn't be hurt, and it's going to coincide, hopefully, with kids going back to school anyway, and it will just-
Well, that's a council decision, you know, we're public employees, we manage a public facility, when the public shows up, our first inclination is to try to manage them, so, so if, but if it's the decision of the council to opt out, that's, like Councilmember Netting said, that's very easy to do, we can do that tomorrow.
I'm going to suggest a couple of things. One, if we could delve a little bit deeper into the opt-out, and are there various layers of that, I think that would be helpful. And then if we could also figure out where there might be a, a conglomeration of these stops and gyms and other parts of the city, so, as the mayor said, would we be playing whack-a-mole with this? If we were to shut it down here, would the problem move someplace else? So, that way council at least has an understanding, and, and some data and information to make a decision on, as to whether or not we opt out, and do they have different levels of opting out? So, I like your very, your very final recommendation, follow-up with council in two weeks, I really liked that recommendation.
Two weeks after school is in session, and maybe-
No, that's not the two weeks I'm referring to.
Oh, okay.
You know, even after school's in session, I worry, because, you know, here we've had conversation earlier about greeting the kids on the first day of school, really? They're going to be looking at their phone, or they may be someplace else, or, or leaving early. That's, I mean, this, the impact of this thing is, is significant. I just want to make sure we do it right, I'm not sure I want to wait two weeks. You know?
I make a motion to direct staff to investigate removing the Poki stops from the Des Moines Marina.
Second.
Discussion? Wait a second, you just said the Marina.
Correct, I think, I, I don't think that we have the authority to, to mandate that a private business who may, I mean, you can go on Yelp and tell them you have a Poki stop, but I think from all public parks, specifically for the sake of getting, because it seems to be impacting the Marina more than our other, so the Marina and the beach park, I mean, Jeremy's right, I just pulled up a thing, in all other places in Seattle, there's maybe one or two per park, Water Tower, we have one up on the North Hill, but this is such a concentration, and this is unlike any of the other parks in King County, that I think we're able to say that it's an inequitable burden on our city, and that we should remove it from the waterfront.
Just a clarification, we really, we don't need to investigate, there's a very clear-cut way to opt out. I would imagine you, the wording would be, all public property, which would probably include right-of-way, and just say, take it off, you're out of the game.
So, that would include the Redondo?
You could just say, any public property or right-of-way in the city of Des Moines, just take it out of the game.
I would be more in favor of that, personally.
I'm fine with that. Friendly amendment accepted.
I'll still say that, you know, investigate, looking at it out, and show you your options, if, if it is more than just yes or no, I think council needs to know what kind of other variations on that might be available, that you might want to have some of it stay. But, if it comes back, it says either in or out, then-
Well, my concern is, we're not back in session until September 8th. If you turn it off, can you turn it back on if you want to?
I didn't ask that, we didn't talk about that.
Well-
Well, let's implement pay parking first, and then turn it back on.
Well-
Very specific about how-
Must be, staff has made that comment, if we'd implemented this a few months ago.
I can't take comments from the public at this time, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it, they were, the, in the webinar, it was very specific, that go to this website, opt out, that's, it was not-
Direct staff to do that.
Well, the council knows what information we have right now, the motion on the table is to opt out of all public places within the city, the city of Des Moines, Washington. Any discussion?
Was that the motion? I thought she said, Melissa strictly said the Marina.
I amend, I accept the friendly amendment.
Okay. Okay, any, any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
So, that motion was to just completely opt out?
Yes.
Yep. Appreciate your guidance, but yes.
Sorry about you.
Just a-
Uh-oh.
Quick update on pay parking, is that what you want?
Oh, pay, yeah.
Pay parking, just very quickly, you heard a comment earlier about the public meetings, the projects in SEPA shoreline now, we had our second public meeting last night, that's our third Wednesday meeting, we plan on continuing those meetings just every month, or every third Wednesday until we, the project's completed. We're also putting up a project website, which should be up by tomorrow, then we'll put our, the plans, meeting schedules, meeting comments, frequently asked questions, that's the type of thing will be on that webpage, it'll be accessible through the Marina website. Next step is request for proposals, I'm, I'm hoping to get that circulating through the staff work group next week, we've tried to pull together, find out what kind of equipment we need, and then we've also, we're also working on the final shop drawings for all the concrete work, so we can finish up those estimates.
Thank you.
Only, the only question I have is, so, when's the estimated implementation date?
I don't have an estimate yet, so, that's going to be largely dependent on permitting too, so, hopefully we have everything ready to go by the time we get out of the permitting phase.
Quick, quickly, I believe Mr. Lynn Scott said there was a meeting coming up in September?
Yes.
Would you, would you make sure that the council all gets an invitation to that meeting, so if any of us can go, we can go, so we can-
meeting, so if any of us can go, we can go, so we can see where the community discussion is?
Okay, yeah, we're trying to, we've, we've had two meetings, very good attendance from the marina district, you know, the, kind of sort of the usual suspects, we're really trying to figure out how to get out to the broader community, and so we're gonna, the next one, we're gonna try, I, I'm gonna try to do that at the Activity Center.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Dan, Brandon, could have one of you come up and make a few comments about Mr. Peterson's thoughts on Fifth Avenue? And Two Twenty Second, I think.
If it's Brandon Carver, Engineering Services Manager, if it's the council's will, I could come back also on September eighth, under admin important, provide a more detailed, um, history, I guess, as to what we've done at Fifth and Two Twenty Second, but in, in brief, um-
That'd be a good idea.
But in brief, to Mr. Peterson's, um, concerns, you know, we have taken several steps from, uh, investigating, installing some curb warning signs at the curve, uh, implementing some raised pavement markers, to see if that would curb some of the centerline crossing, and, uh, then installing some raised tubular delineators, uh, which are about eighteen inches tall, uh, through a portion of the curve, and then most recently, installing two-speed humps on the beach park road, which a lot of the, uh, I would say, users in that area are kind of, uh, trying to curb the demand, if you will, for some of the, some of the, um, uh, users that Mr. Peterson may have, may have witnessed, and really, um, we're sort of at the end of our toolkit, I think we're, we're looking to maybe partner with the police in, in some enforcement, and I wouldn't want to get out, out in front of the police on this, uh, as far as working together to make sure we really have, um, uh, a repetitive problem, or just a couple, you know, outliers, so, um, that's kind of where we're at, from a short statement, so.
Any other questions?
Questions?
Well, I think, uh, an update on September eighth, so we can see what you have applied already, and, um-
And if possible for us to have done a little bit of enforcement, Chief, I know your guys are pretty thin, but, um-
And any other solutions that you might have in mind?
Well, and really, uh, I know that I've been available, and Gary and I have talked, uh, several times in my office, and, um, you know, it, it, it's difficult to, to really see this as a, necessarily, a, uh, engineering, um, problem, uh, but, but maybe bordering more on a, on a quality of life issue, there's a hill there, vehicles accelerate, some of these vehicles have a lot of mufflers, and, um, that may exacerbate the perception of speeding, but, uh, it's, uh, be happy to listen to George, and see if he's got anything to add.
Um, what I will tell you is, the area we're talking about isn't too long of an area, so, it's been brought up at supervisors' meetings repeatedly, on what we do, and on the, on the heels of, um, the Pokémon craze, the, um, issues just prior to Pokémon, if you remember, we had a couple of incidents of violence, and, uh, and then the marijuana smoking, uh, issues along the trail, so, um, quite a few smaller issues, but very high-profile problematic issues in that area. Um, one thing we've talked about, and I, and I've talked to, um, Garrett quite a bit about this, um, over the months, is, how do we get people there at the right time? Because they're either coming in, or they're coming out, and even when people call, uh, by the time an, even if an officer leaves a station to go down there and address it, they're long gone, so it's a matter of having to sit there, and at times when officers have sat there, um, maybe just monitoring Pokémon, trying to do a couple things at once, smell marijuana, watch Pokémon people go and look for cars, it's really, it's something you try to do, um, and some days they'll catch people coming up, there's been a few citations written up by the ABC store, um, but then again, um, it's not very common, and oftentimes, if an officer does sit there, before you know it, they're called away, so, it's a challenge, and it's a, it's a difficult situation, um, you know, and, and one of the things I want to make clear to the citizens is, yes, it's, it's, it's been called small fish, I don't address it as small fish, because it's a community livability issue, it keeps people awake at night, it's a safety hazard, it's a danger to pedestrians walking, so we're looking at all those things, we're not minimizing the, the problem, what we're doing is trying to figure out how we can approach, uh, this problem, uh, while we're approaching the other problems, uh, with the time we have, and, and take the opportunity to address multiple issues, this being one of them. Uh, it's a very difficult issue, like I said, and we're not ignoring it, we're trying to, not trying to run away from it, but it's like, uh, trying to catch fish in, in your hand, and it's, it's very difficult to do, but we will continue to address it, we'll try to come up with solutions, we'll continue to talk to community, uh, work with, and we're hoping, uh, with the paid parking, that actually helps us find a solution, sometimes a solution like that, that's, that's larger in nature, and focused on that area, creates, um, other opportunities, uh, for enforcement, or, or other types of collaboration, so I'm looking forward to that, but again, it, it's not something that we're gonna just ignore and, and make go away, we're gonna continue to try and address and do what we can.
Thanks, Chief.